Do I have a motion for executive session for personnel matters?
So do.
Have a motion by Ms. Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Revels. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Now going to the executive session. Thank you.
We have a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Kelly, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Call this meeting to order for the general session of York School District One. We will now have our invocation by Reverend Lowry Drennan, Mount Vernon United Methodist Church. He can agree.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, as we gather this evening, we ask your guidance for all of the leaders gathered here on the York School District. Lord, we pray continually for the teachers and the students and all the support staff who seek so earnestly to educate our young men and women. Lord, be with now, be with all of us now, as the business of this organization is addressed. And for all those, Lord, who seek to serve, serve this district, Lord, we lift them up this day in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Want to add a pledge of allegiance by Aubrey Neal from Harold C. Johnson Elementary School. Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum with all members present. The media has been notified, are there any members of the media present tonight? There were no signups to speak in the public forum session. We'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move for the adoption.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kelly, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. So move. Now we'll move into our recognitions. For our monthly school spotlight this evening, we have Harold C. Johnson Elementary. Ms. Sandifer will be presenting. Ms. Sandifer?
Ms. Resigno with me here as well, our assistant principal. Chairman Childers, board members, Superintendent Cox, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to showcase the wonderful things that are happening at Harold C. Johnson Elementary School. This year, we've taken on two big initiatives that have led to growth for our students. At the end of last school year, we reflected with our building leadership team on needs that we wanted to address with our students. We noticed again and again that teachers wanted time to directly work on meeting the social emotional needs of our students and to develop their soft skills. They saw a need to intentionally teach our students how to engage in powerful conversations, to really listen to others and have meaningful dialogue, how to successfully collaborate with a group, how to be self-motivated and self-directed. When you research the top skills that employers are looking for in potential employees, no matter the source, you always find communication, adaptability, problem-solving, teamwork, creativity, leadership, and interpersonal skills at the top of the list. And these are all soft skills that are essential to college and career readiness, as indicated on the profile of South Carolina graduate. We decided to get, dedicate each morning to targeted instruction in soft skills through Soft Start and Morning Meeting. This powerful daily ritual has developed into our avenue for teaching social emotional skills. And Ms. Resigno is going to talk about our second initiative.
Secondly, we decided to focus on personalized learning by dedicating thirty minutes each day to target the specific academic needs of each student in our building. We have traditionally scheduled intervention for students who have the highest level of needs of support. We wanted to expand our support system to include flexible grouping across each grade level to provide targeted intervention, support, enrichment, or extension for each student in grades K through four. Our glow time provides thirty minutes of targeted instruction daily for each student. We want to commend all of our teachers for their dedication to making this vision a reality. The level of intentionality and the amount of planning involved has been tremendous, but they have truly worked together to make it a success for our students.
I would also like to recognize Dr. Wendy Sizmore, our literacy coach. She has been instrumental in all of the planning involved in all of these initiatives. So at this time, we will move into our video.
My name is Crystal Sandifer. I'm the principal at Harold C. Johnson Elementary School. And one of the things that sets us apart is our emphasis on development for the whole child. So looking at each child and determining what their needs are at that moment in time. That could mean their academic needs as well as their social emotional needs. So each day, our students participate in Soft Start where they get to have choice activities. Then we move into Morning Meeting, and each classroom teacher has a morning meeting each day where the students are all affirmed, they're individually greeted, they have some type of sharing that they do with each other where they share maybe struggles that they're going through. They may share goals that they're setting as a class. They work together to really build that community of care and support through that morning meeting time. And a lot of our teachers have found that that's their favorite part of the day.
My name is Hannah Resigno, and I'm the assistant principal at Harold C. Johnson Elementary School. Our theme this year is Grow to Glow, and so Ms. Sandifer and I really focused our intervention time with, with that title. So our glow time is where we have thirty minutes every day of very targeted intervention for students. And it happens in every grade level, start, you know, starting in our kindergarten classes. And during that time, students receive whatever it is that they need. Our grade levels have a lot of autonomy in how that needs to look. They are targeting math instruction and ELA instruction. And if students need to switch groups and start receiving something different, you know, they're able to do that. The focus that we've had on the intentionality in the morning and making sure that every student is set up for success in the morning through our Soft Start and Morning Meeting, we knew that students during their thirty minutes of glow time would really be willing and able and available to take that risk to really push themselves in the academic direction that they need to go.
We recently surveyed a group of students about their thoughts and feelings about glow time, and it was very interesting to see how many of the students actually love and appreciate the time that we spend with them every day during glow time. And here's what some of them said.
And it got me like so emotional because I really didn't know how to do a lot of things. And then glow time was here, and it helped me a lot, like way more than usual. But I wasn't like those kids because I wasn't really smart. But until I was like, oh, maybe I can do this. And then I started to believe in myself, and then I actually tried a lot.
I like it like how we get to learn like math and we doing, while we're doing the glow time.
Yeah, like different subjects.
And so students are now receiving instruction based on their identified academic needs. And that changes. We've made it so that it's fluid, the teachers are able to make instructional decisions using data throughout the year.
There's lots of different theories of child development, but when you think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, people's basic needs have to be met first, and the most essential of those is, do I feel safe? Do I feel loved? And so we want to ensure that all of our children feel safe and loved. Then they can go on to do great things in terms of their academics.
So again, we'd like to thank you so much. We feel like the spotlight video, which shout out to Josh Boville, who puts the videos together because he really captured our story. We really feel like it explains both of our initiatives, and it really gives a glimpse into the impact that it has on our students. We really wanted the student voice to shine through. It was amazing to watch the students, we couldn't put all of it in the video because we only had three minutes, but we had so much wonderful dialogue watching the students talk about glow time and how much it meant to them. And they were able to listen to another person and say, oh, I really agree with what you're saying there. And then they would go on to make their point. And as we watched it, while we were filming it, we all had tears in our eyes because we were seeing the fruits of Morning Meeting carrying over into actual conversation that our students are having. So we appreciate the time that you've given us to showcase our school. Any questions or comments?
Do I have any questions or comments?
Job well done. You guys have built, you know, fabulous school environment. And that morning meeting is very crucial in getting students' days started and, and potentially even solving issues before they begin.
Yeah.
So good job.
We've definitely seen that carry over into the academics throughout the day when we handle those things in the morning.
Just one thing. Very good. I got to see some of this when I visited your school. I was looking for the singing. Every class summer song.
That's right. Every class Ms. Johnson went in, there was some, some singing going on.
I, I wanted to know if that was a criteria for the teachers. But it was a very good presentation.
Thank you.
And I can personally say that I saw a lot of that happening when I was there.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate the comment on the feeling safe and feeling loved. That's, that's awesome. So, um, thank you, Ms. Sandifer and Ms. Resigno. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Well, now to move to our student-staff recognitions, and that will be by Ms. Spangler, and Ms. Johnson will assist.
Good evening. We'd like to ask Dr. Green from the Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center to come forward. And then DECA advisors Gail Harrington and Mitchell Galloway. Sixteen students and two advisors attended the South Carolina DECA Association Career Development Conference in North Charleston. There were over nine hundred students from around the state in attendance. Please congratulate the following students who placed in the competition. Students, I'll call your name, and if you'll come forward, then just stay forward until we get the whole group, okay? For International Business Plan, first place Josiah Sullivan and Aiden Clark. For Financial Literacy Project, first place Casey Romero Montiel and Caroline Adams. For Business Solutions Project, first place Avery Black, Lily Burke, and Aria, Aria Haynes. For Employment Acquisition, second place Addison Black. For Independent Business Plan, second place Kylie Hahn and DeAsia White. For Community Awareness Project, second place Gavin Turner and Josh Perez. For Innovation Plan Top Ten, Cody Blackman and Skylar Mitchell. For Startup Business Plan Top Ten, Grayson Brown and Cooper Williams. Twelve of the students qualified to attend and compete at the DECA International Career Development Conference, April twenty-second through twenty-fifth in Orlando, Florida. Let's congratulate these students.
I wish for students to be in the contest. These are just great students. I've got students and friends.
Well, thank you, Ms. Erin. Congratulations. And Dr. Green, we'll get you to stay, and if Ms. Catherine Greenway is here, we'll ask her to come forward. All right. Congratulations to Cameron Williams, eleventh grade York FFA member who participated in the Mr. FFA Scholarship Competition at Pendleton High School. This was Cameron's first time participating in this event, and he placed in the top five out of forty contestants from across the state. He won the People's Choice Award. To prepare for this event, he had to submit a lengthy application, participate in an in-person interview, practice public speaking for his introduction, and research information about the agricultural industry for an onstage question. Congratulations, Cameron. All right, and we'll call for Ms. Ballerino, who's the principal at York Middle School. And Mr. Dylan Sims, who's the band director. Okay, he, he's not able to be with us. So we have a large number of students. We'll ask y'all to come forward, and just like the ones previously, you'll stay forward and let us get a picture at the end. Congratulations to the following students who attended the SCBDA State Finals and returned as state champions. For percussion ensemble, Ashlyn Mason, Lilly Wagner, Taylor Green. Tyson Dellinger, Marcos Arroyo Mancera, Julian Moore, Carly Proctor, Ivy Trailer, and Russell Ryder. Okay, also, the group of cougarettes in this stain, in this same group. Adaya Easter, Amber Crawford, Ashley Pablo, Damaria Kennedy, Gabrielle Ross, Lacey Billings, Michaela Watmore, Michaela Thomason, Malaya Coffey, Miana Coffey, Sophie Tomberlin, Stevie Logan, Zoe Hudgens, Yurianna Lunas, Luna Benos, Alyssa Blackwell. Gwen Elam. Jeremiah Alexander. Madison Dibble. Mary Hassan. And Trinity Baccatier. Let's give these state champions a round of applause. So next, we'd like to recognize one of our middle school students who won third place in the York County All On Board Talent Show, Ms. Claire Guilfman. The All On Board Youth Talent Show was held a few weeks ago. Claire competed with youth from throughout York County. Her talent was playing guitar and singing Grandpa by the Judds. As a third-place finisher, Claire took home $100 cash prize. And I'll say, I was in the audience, and I was quite impressed. So, very talented. Thank you. That concludes our student recognition.
I say this often, but to compete at any level is an accomplishment. To compete and win at the state level, that's work that's done every day, and I think that is acknowledged and appreciated. So giving these recognitions is hopefully appreciated by all, and great job to those who, especially who won that state. That's very impressive. We'll move on now into reports. Ms. Spangler, again.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to give you an update on federal grants and competitive grants. I can't believe they don't want to stay for this riveting.
I had a pause, but it really didn't work.
Thank you, parents, for attending.
Congratulations. Pointed at it, okay. Okay. So when we look at grants in the federal programs, it does fit within our board priority that says we should act as good stewards of district resources to offer a variety of opportunities for our students. And I think we do a really good job of that in our district. And I will say, no grant is written by Lisa Spangler by herself. It is basically a team effort with everything we do. I really have to thank the executive staff and the principals. When I call them for information or to come to the table to help plan, they're always willing to do that. And so what the information I'm going over is actually attributed to everybody in the audience at this point. So I'd like to start by telling you the difference between competitive and formula grants. Competitive grants are just that. We compete with other people from throughout the state or from actually throughout the nation, if it is a national grant, federal grant. And we basically are scored. The top scorers win the grant, the bottom scorers do not. It's as simple as that. We respond to an RFP, a Request for Proposals. We have to design a program within certain parameters, but it really is a free rein development at that point, and your budget is dependent upon what you design as a project. A formula grant is really is dependent upon our allocation from a state that's based on the formula, and the formula normally takes into account our student population and also our poverty rates. And those are our title programs and our other federal programs. We are not competing with others. We are guaranteed that money if we write a plan that complies with the parameters of the program. So it's not just, here's just some free money, do what you want. We do have to develop a plan that is approved and reviewed and approved. So our competitive grants today, these are the ones we have currently, and you can see, there'd be no way I could write these without people involved. Our National School Lunch Program Grant and our No Kid Hunger Grant provides, all of those provide cafeteria equipment. And we have gotten two National School Lunches and one No Kid Hungry. Hunter Street's been the beneficiary of three of those grants, ice machine and a heated cabinet and a passive refrigerator. And Cotton Belt got a commercial garbage disposal and a meat slicer. And while that may not be exciting to them, it is to the cafeteria staff for sure. Our EEDA grant is, funds our at-risk program at the high school, our at-risk coordinator in some of our makeup school, and some of the opportunities students have to recover credit. Our United Way Grant, this is our third year receiving that grant, and that provides for our Microsoft Office Program for Adult Learners, and we're excited to be able to offer that. Last month, Mr. Queen talked to you about and gave you a demonstration of the walkthrough pass-through metal detectors. Those are funded by our second COPS grant, and it also gives our SROs the opportunity to attend professional development conferences. Our Duke Energy Foundation Grant provided an opportunity, or provided safety harnesses for our students in our line worker program at Floyd D. Johnson. The DHEC Grant, this was a result of COVID money that DHEC offered as grants to the districts, and we were able to provide retention bonuses for our nurses and for the work that they did during COVID. Sisters of Mercy has been hot off the press, and that one was quite the battle to receive, but that will fund our Parents' Teachers Program at our parenting center. We really have to thank Jessica and April for their help on that one. And then our SRC Community Partnership Grant, you've heard about this one. We've had it several years. Our students in the Summer Reading Camp Morning Program get an opportunity to do camp-like activities throughout the community in the afternoon as a result of that grant. And so those are the ones we have, competitive grants, that we, the district, receive. Now, we also work with our community agencies, and our Connected as One opportunities in the district to, we write grants, they receive those grants, and they manage those grants to benefit our students. So it really is a good partnership. Our biggest one is our 21st Century Community Learning Center Grants. We have six of those through the Boys and Girls Club that fund our after-school programs at our five elementary and our York Intermediate. And then just recently, we received word that our grant that we wrote for liability to offer therapeutic writing lessons to our students with special needs was approved. So we're very excited to be able to offer that opportunity for our students, both in the summer and during our intercession weeks. Okay, and then next are our formula grants. And these are our, they're boogaboos sometimes, but they are good money for our district, and we, as a district, really understand what we need to do to collaborate and make the most use of these monies. And I can't say that enough. As a team, we come together, we look at these, and we sometimes piece together six different grants. Amy and Sheri are really good at that. And the principals and our staff understand how we do that to make things happen for our students. Really can't say that enough. Our Title I Grant, obviously, we fund the top three highest poverty schools in our district, elementary schools in our district, and those are Jefferson, this year, Jefferson, Harrell C., and Hickory Grove Sharon. Much of that money, the greatest majority of that money is used for class size reduction. It helps us keep those numbers down in those classrooms at the elementary level, which is research-proven to help students academically succeed. Our principals do a really good job to use a little bit of money that we give them with some flexibility to offer parent activities, student incentives. They purchase some software licenses. We have some interpretative services. They do a good job with what little bit of flexibility they have with the funds that are left over. Title II funds are teacher quality funds, but they're also a little misleading because you can use those funds for class size reduction. And so we use a great majority of those funds for class size reductions at the other two elementary schools. We also use those funds to register for teacher recruitment fairs. We also pay a very small stipend to our mentor teachers out of those funds. Title III is our smallest pot of money and the least flexible amount of money we can ever receive in this district. Mr. Carper does a really good job to manage that. We offer a summer program for students with EL, for our EL students, and he also does a parenting event. I think he told you about the parent event he had for EL parents at Harrell C. Johnson most recently, and Mr. Carper does a really good job to manage that. Our Title IV funds are the most eclectic group of funds. We have to use part of it for safety. We have to use part of it for technology, and then we can use part of it for academics. And so this year, we've used those funds for our Connected as Readers Program, for our summer program for rising first-grade students, for our High School 101 Materials, for our online professional development management system, for supporting All On Board, and our Keystone Substance Student Assistance Program, which places a counselor at our high school from Keystone. ATS I funds, we've just recently received our allocation, and we're in the process of developing the plan for that. Our curriculum department's been working very hard on that. And basically, that will be used to support students with special needs in the identified schools. This year, we've received an ARP homeless allocation. That money has been used to provide professional development and also supports for our homeless students, professional development for our staff, and supports for our homeless students. And then, of course, you're familiar with our SRR1 and SRR2 and SRR3 funds. Those are the ones that are still on the table, and we do a really good job to manage those and try to maximize those funds as best we can. Now, that was the quick rundown, and I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Out of curiosity, explain the competitive funds or the competitive grants. Is that, are you competing? Is that statewide? Is it every school in the state, or what is that?
It depends. Sometimes you have to be eligible to apply for the funds, and then you compete with whoever's eligible. Sometimes it's any district in the state, like, for example, the kitchen equipment grants. Those are, everybody in the state can apply for those. For the federal grants, any school in the nation can apply. So the COPS grant, we're up against any school nationwide. So it depends on the audience and also who's... Our Duke Power Grant that we received, you have to be in the Duke Power catchment area. And you really had to address any of the energy efficiency. So there are parameters, but there's the flexibility within parameters. There's less flexibility with our federal programs. Well, thank you. We hope to receive more. We got several out in a hopper. Any other questions?
Still questions?
Thank you.
Thank you as always to you and your team. And next, we'll have Ms. Almer for the Gifted and Talented Programs update.
Good evening, Chairman Childers, members of the board, Superintendent Cox. I am delighted to be able to come to you one more time before the school airs out to share a GT update with you. Last time I was with you was August. So the first part of this will be just some quick reminders. Our goal for our GT students is to maximize their potential by providing programs and services that match their unique characteristics and needs. And as a district, and our district, we're going to plan, we have two goals that go around GT. Our first GT goal states that by 2027, 8.7% of our second graders will qualify for GT by the end of their second grade year. As you have seen or will see, right now, this year, we are at 4% of our second graders qualify. So we have a couple more years to get up to that 8.7. Our second goal is by 2027, 90% of the students who are served in our Gifted and Talented Program, the academic side of that, will maintain their GT status through the end of their 12th grade year. And currently, we're at 84.2% meeting that. So we do have two sides to Gifted and Talented. We have academic, and we have artistic. So the first part of this will be around your academic. A quick refresher on how we identify our students who are gifted and talented academically. If a student ranks in the 96 national percentile or higher on their composite aptitude test, then they automatically qualify for Gifted and Talented services in our district. Otherwise, there's three dimensions, dimension A, B, and C. So if a student receives credit for two of those three dimensions, then they are eligible for placement. Just so you know, because I know Ms. Kuhn talks about her testing, but in dimension A, the two tests will be COGAT and NAGLIERI. In dimension B, that's our NWA MAP that we give three times a year, or SC Ready, or Iowa. And dimension C is our performance task that we administer. So back in August, I told you we were servicing 543 students, 3rd through 12th grade, academically gifted, and currently, we are at 568 students. So that number has gone up by 25. And then through all of our testing that we've done this year, we got some newly qualified for next year. So we have 14 in 2nd grade. We had 24 offgraded, and we tested 99 students for the PTA, which would be grades 2 through 5. We have not received those scores back. Those will come back in May. And so I'm sure when I come back in August for an update, I'll be able to tell you how many of those 99 students qualified. So this year, our GT teachers wanted to also give a little update. We were able to go back and implement our field trips. So our first trip, we traveled to the Shille Museum of Natural History in Gastonia. Students participated in several classes and activities that tied to our archaeology and materials engineering units. They even got to participate in the lesson titled "The Kataba Village." And so the students were able to see how the Katabas' technology evolved once the Europeans arrived in the Carolinas. They also learned the devastating effects of the arrival of new diseases on the Kataba. Some students participated in the rock and mineral lab, where they used their observation and deductive reasoning skills to sort minerals according to their properties. One of the favorite activities that students enjoyed was the Planetarium Show. We all, right, when we were in school, enjoyed that one? They were able to learn some interesting facts about the sun, moon, and earth, and that went right along with our South Carolina standards. Our second trip involved our 4th graders. This is a wonderful merit tradition. Let me tell y'all tradition. The 4th grader, they do an overnight trip to Camp Thunderbird. For many students, this was their first overnight trip from home. Some were scared, but many were excited. All fears vanished when they saw how cool it was to be able to pick the top bunk for the night. The merit team chose some wonderful team-building and cooperative challenges for this group of students. They had to realize that it takes a whole team to solve problems sometimes, and that reinforces our STEM and STEAM units. Engineering design process, teamwork is an engineer's best friend. And we're always working with our students to cooperate and compromise something they need in their classrooms, home, and the real world. We also had multiple learning opportunities that follow the archaeology and anthropology units of study. We had guests from the community show us replicas from the Stone Age and demonstrate how they worked and evolved throughout history. The students were actually amazed at how innovative the Stone Age people were to craft and improve upon technology of the time. They were most impressed, though, with the fire-starting activity and the blowgun demonstration from Mr. Ray. So to piggyback off of that, students participated in a Pioneer Life class, where they were transported back over 100 years to take the three-month journey from Philadelphia to Charlotte. Did they survive? It just depended on which supplies they chose and the route that they took. And then in March, our 5th and 6th graders from Hickory Grove were able to go to Camp Thunderbird. This was the trip they missed in 2021 due to COVID. They were able to experience low-rope challenges, wildlife ecology class, campfire skits with smores. Archery was the favorite activity enjoyed by all students while there. They also learned about conserving food during meal times. They were encouraged to only take what they would eat. After each meal, plates were stacked and leftover food was weighed. If no food was wasted, then the team earned the Golden Plate Award. And just from here, our three merit teachers, Ms. Collier, Ms. Merrill, and Ms. Parker, wanted to extend their appreciation to the board members, the Transportation Office, and to all the chaperones. They would not be able to offer these experiences for our students without y'all's continual support. And then I wanted to end with the artistic portion of our GT program. So in grades 6 through 8, our students are able to participate in starts, which is held during the summer. It's in June this year, the 5th through the 23rd. We have 55 students who will be participating, and in order for them to participate, this is actually an audition process. And in order for them to participate, this is actually an audition process. So they have to come, they, when they come here, the students audition and then they're chosen. They're kind of ranked, like I would think band, C1, C2, C3 type thing. So we got 55 participating and I broke down their areas so that you can see. We got seven in dance and drama, 16 in visual arts, we got 25 in music, 16 of those are for voice, and nine are instrumental. And you can see the instruments at that point. So that is my GT update for you. Are there any questions that I could answer?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Do you happen, and you may not, do you happen to have a breakdown of the schools of the 14 newly qualified students? Like, how many were from each elementary school?
I have it, but not with me. But there are qualifiers from every elementary school. I can give that to you. Yeah, sure. I can give that to you.
How many came from each?
Sure thing. I'll make that note for myself. Probably found that.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Thank you for that update. Great, appreciate it. Thanks for everybody on the team as well.
Thank you.
Next up, Officer of Instruction, Ms. Alyssa Cox.
Good evening Chairman Childers and members of the board. We have one action item for you tonight. But before I ask for your formal approval, I'd like to provide you with an exciting update from your previously blessed approval of our competency-based education application. It was presented today at the State Board of Education. And at around 1:00 PM this afternoon, we received communication that it was unanimously voted on for approval, which is very, very exciting. I'm thrilled, we all are. One of two, us and Lexington, three. Thank you, Dr. Dixon, for reminding me of that. So we were one of two that were approved to move forward. So we will be able, one of two. Very, very exciting. I was sitting on pins and needles all day today as they knew I was running around waiting for communication. But we'll be able to move forward and start to strategically implement some of the components of that competency-based education portion. And that in turn will help us to meet many of our goals within our district renewal plans. So in reference to that, you received information and data and performance goals were presented to you previously by Jessica Kuhn and Dr. Dixon at the September 27th and the October 25th Board Work Sessions. And so we are respectfully requesting approval of our annual 23-24 District Strategic Plan that includes overarching goals around the focus areas of increasing English Language Arts Achievement, increasing mathematics achievement, increasing our graduation rate, calibrating and providing quality instructional feedback as we work to implement not only competency-based but student-centered learning practices. And as you just heard from Ms. Ulmer, increasing the retention of our students served in the Gifted and Talented Program.
Does anybody have any questions before we go to motion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, that's presented.
Do I have approval by Ms. Kelly? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. So move.
Thank you again for your continued support.
Yeah, congratulations again. That's very impressive. Next, we'll have Coordinator of Instruction Technology, Mr. Tim Cooper.
Good evening Chairman Childers, members of the board, Superintendent Cox. Thank you for your time this evening. Tonight, I bring to you one action item, a request and adoption of the state a textbook for Biology I for our high school. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any question, Mr. Cooper, before going to motion? Do we have a motion? Motion by Rebels to accept as presented. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Move on to Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Hagner.
Good evening Board members. I have a couple of action items for you tonight. First is Policy GBEA Employee Ethics Conflict of Interest, and I ask for approval for first reading.
Anybody have any questions of Ms. Hagner on this item? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion to approve asked presented by Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second with first reading.
Ms. Johnson, second for first reading. You want to make that an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson, you accept that amendment to the motion?
Yes.
With the motion as amended by Anderson and second by Ms. Johnson, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is Policy GCLE Unencumbered Time and I ask for your approval for second reading.
Any questions of Ms. Hagner? Did want to note that this is, you know, something that State Board of Education adopted just to, you know, put that on the record that we are hearing this and voting on this based on that as well. Do I have a motion?
So some move for approval, second reading of GCLE Unencumbered Time.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion?
Ms. Cox, can we have an update sometime in the Friday file as to how some of that, I know we implemented some of that, just trial and error.
Yeah, they've been doing some pilot. They probably haven't landed on where they're going to be first of the year. But we can do an update on how they're still, they're still tweaking.
Yeah.
Happy to do that.
Any other items of discussion before the vote? Do we have the motion second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Last I have is a budget update. I really don't have anything. Last time I was before you, House had approved their budget. Since then, Senate Finance did a quick day and a half or so of budget deliberations, approved theirs. That bill will be printed this week. It'll go to Senate floor next week for debate. Not sure if we'll have Senate projections by the time we meet in April. If not, we'll just base our revenues off of the House projections. But there were really not a whole lot of changes between the two. So I don't anticipate any major changes once we get the Senate projections. But I'm happy to answer any questions regarding budget if you have it.
Anybody have any questions of Ms. Hagner?
Not yet.
Be ready for April.
Thank you, Ms. Hagner. Next we'll have for Officer Human Resources, Mr. Mark Sanders. I will go ahead and do the standard reminder, any discussion for certified resignation and release certified resignations, certified retirements, or certified recommendations. I have to go into executive session for personnel matters if there's discussion or need for discussion. Mr. Sanders.
Good afternoon, it's good evening, actually. Protocol having been established, Chairman Childers, we have five action items for your consideration this evening. That first item being certified resignations, 22-23.
Do we have a motion for certified resignations?
So move for the adoption of certified resignations for 22-23.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Our second item, certified retirements, 22-23.
Do I have a motion for certified retirements end of the 22-23 school year?
So move for the recommendation of certified retirement with congratulations for the school year of 2022-23.
Ms. Johnson with the motion with congratulations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rebels. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Item number three, certified recommendations for 22-23.
Do we have a motion for certified recommendations for 22-23?
So move for the adoption of certified recommendations for 22-23.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Our fourth item, certified recommendations for the New Year 23-24.
Do we have a motion for certified recommendations 20-23-24?
Accept certified recommendations for 20-23-24.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rebels. Second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion needed? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
And the fifth and final item, returning certified recommendations for the 23-24 school year.
Do we have a motion for returning certified recommendations for the 20-23-20-24 school year?
Motion to approve with the name stricken in middle school and then the high school person. Can't remember my own handwriting.
Amended to.
As amended, so it's like annual two.
So we have a motion on the floor to include item to be stricken from middle school and as amended to reflect annual two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion needed? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll now turn it over to Officer Superintendent, Ms. Kelly Cox.
Good evening Chairman, Board members. I have one action item for you this evening. I'm bringing forward an administrative recommendation for your approval.
Do we have a motion for administrative recommendation?
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Motion to approve recommendation by Ms. Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion needed? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
The final item that I have for you is a review of our upcoming dates. You can see that we will be having Cougar Zone Parade again this year. It is returning after an absence with COVID. That will be this Thursday evening, in fact, at the high school. We had already previously scheduled a wrap session that night, dangers of social media for our parents. So we are incorporating that into Cougar Zone Parade. So it will be a parent meeting during Cougar Zone Parade. So very appreciative of the high school for making that flexibility for us. April the 19th, we have Day at the Capitol. And I believe, Mr. Childers, at this point, you were the one vote board member who is registered to attend. If anyone else is wanting to attend, please let Renee know. Ms. Kelly, okay. Two of you attended. We do have a work session in April that will be very budget-heavy. The majority of our program will be the budget. Ms. Hagner has worked most of her spring break, getting ready for that. May the 2nd, we will have a federal programs meeting. You all will be invited to attend that. That invitation will be forthcoming, if you haven't already received it, from Mrs. Hagner. I will like to draw your attention to May the 4th. May the 4th, Ms. Hagner and I will be doing our Budget Stakeholder Meeting. That has been on the calendar. We did do a date change because we don't have any budget information on the original date. So we'll do that on the 4th at 5:00. We're also asking for you to please hold that day. That is not a regular scheduled board meeting. Please hold that day for a possible work session at 6:00 PM after the stakeholder meeting. We'll be able to determine at the April 25th meeting whether or not we need it. Basically, if y'all have questions or revisions that you'd like to make on the 25th, we'll need that meeting before first reading of the budget. If you're good on the 25th, we won't need that meeting. So we'll be able to determine that night. And then we roll into the regular May meeting and graduation right around the corner on June 2nd. That's all I have for you, this is the board members.
I did want to make a note just personally on the 4th. I may not be able to be here on the 4th if we need that meeting. It's kind of there, so. Any questions of Ms. Cox? Do we have a need for executive session? And if so, do I have a motion?
Motion for executive session for personnel matter.
We have a motion by Ms. Kelly for personnel matters for executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. We'll now go into executive session.
Yeah, they put some dirty stuff in there.
I'm sorry.
Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So do.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kelly, second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Anybody have any other topics prior to adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Y'all have a good one?
I did take four of those candies.